That might have gotten a couple of cups of coffee at Starbucks.
Yeah.
Can't retire and do this for a while.
No. The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. This evening, our invocation will be led by Rodney Ward, pastor of Harless United Methodist.
Thank you, Mayor. And as pastor of Harless and a member of the Minister Alliance of Denison, I want to thank you all for allowing us to come and open in prayer. So let's pray. Father God, we pray for our mayor and our council to grant them grace to face their unique challenges regarding political decisions which affect the lives and the businesses of the citizens of Denison. As the new year begins, Lord, be with our mayor and our council as they weigh the pros and cons of each constituent's request and the future of Denison. Give them wisdom on how to best represent everyone and provide growth to the city. Lord, let your love be the guidance they follow as they represent this great city. May the Spirit of wisdom be with them as you give our leaders courage so that even when it's hard, they would continue to boldly represent their constituents' needs and those of the most vulnerable. As we gather to discern how to best govern Denison, we ask your presence be felt and your love be guiding the decisions made tonight. All the citizens are your children, and we need the Holy Spirit leading us as we try to follow your leadership. I pray, Father God, lift up all who serve in the community, protecting us from fire and theft, providing utility services, administrators who take notes, the city inspectors, as well as all those here tonight. As David wrote in Psalms 33, 14 through 22, "From his dwelling pace he watches all who live on earth; he who forms the hearts of all, who considers everything they do. No king is saved by the size of his army; no warrior escapes by his great strength. Their horse is a vain hope for deliverance. Despite all its great strength it cannot save. But the eyes of the Lord are on those who fear him, on those who hope is in his unfailing love to deliver them from death and keep them alive in phantom." We wait in hope for the Lord. He is our help and our shield. In Him our hearts rejoice, for we trust in His holy name. May your unfailing love be with us, Lord, even as we put our hope in you. It is in this unfailing love that you have for us that we call upon you to help us in Denison, be a beacon to the citizens of Texas as a place one can call home, knowing we are safe under the guidance and leadership of this council. We welcome your presence in this new year. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. This evening, we are honored to have with us three members of the sixth grade band at B. McDaniel, Camilla Pilcher, Parker Smith, and Anniston Quaid, who are going to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Ladies, thank you very much. This evening, we have a very special presentation to make, so we're going to get right to it. I'm going to ask to come to the podium Hugh Gibson, National Water Resources Texas Regional Manager, and Jeff Edwards, Texas Senior Field Representative, to make a presentation to our fire chief and our fire department.
Mayor, thank you very much. We're honored to be here today to present the Class One reading. And let's see, let me make sure I know how to operate this thing. There we go. Effective this month, you are the newest Class One in Texas. To become a Class One, you have to be doing just everything excellent as far as fire protection. It's based on when someone dials 911, who responds, what kind of water is there, and what kind of community risk reduction is done in the city. It's a culmination of all those efforts. There we go. The fire protection classification ratings are utilized across the entire country. There's about 45,000 fire protection areas in the country. And what the ratings show is that where you have better fire protection leads to less loss and in turn, less premiums to property owners within a city. The fire suppression rating schedule is utilized to measure the ratings and to make the evaluation. The schedule itself is based on, or has 105.5 points available, and it's based on national standards, the APCO standards for emergency communications, National Fire Protection Association for the fireside, and American Water Works for the water side of that. Within the schedule, even though there's 105.5 points available, the ratings themselves are based on 100-point scale. And where you score in a 10-point margin is what classification you earned. In this case, you scored between 90 and 100 to be awarded the Class One here this evening. Countrywide, out of that 45,000 fire protection areas, there's about 500 Class Ones across the country. You are in the elite countrywide. That is about 1% of all communities nationwide, actually a little less than 1% are Class One. It ranges from, as you can see, 1 all the way up to a Class 10 there. Throughout Texas, we have about 100 Class Ones in Texas. Little bit higher percentage. Texas is very progressive as far as fire protection. We have, and I am proud to say, that we have the most Class Ones in the country. We lead the country by far. So that is huge. So not only are you the elite countrywide, but you are in the elites with the elites because Texas is really proven to be a leader countrywide with public protection classifications. Now, what encompasses all this? As I told you, it's based on a first alarm response to a structure fire, but not just that. We look at what's in the community, what's your needed fire flow areas, what's your target hazards per se, your boundaries and all like that. And then we break it down to the communications, the fire, the water, and the community risk reduction side as well. Because the fire that doesn't start, obviously, is the fire you never had. On the emergency communication side, it's 10% or 10 points within the survey. We look at, it's important to have the phone lines and the communication equipment, the computer-aided dispatch and all. But what's really important is how fast are those folks who answer the 911 calls getting the fire department dispatched and getting the trucks rolling on the street. We look at the performance of that, how those folks are trained, and how they are certified for their positions. As you can see, that's 10 points within that. Excellent score, 9.4. In all areas, the communications did quite well. And as you'll see, in each of the major categories, each area has to score well for a community, a city, to be a Class One. On the fireside, same concept here. Those big red trucks, all the equipment, very important. But what is vitally important is where those fire stations are, who's responding, how many folks responding, and how those folks are trained are really key, and the operational considerations, i.e. the standard operating procedures that they utilize. On the fireside, that's the major, the largest section within. There's 50 points there. The, in this case, the 41 points out of the 50, just outstanding score. And sometimes, you know, the size of your city, your deployment, how many stations, it's things that you can't change. What you can always change and work on is what you can see here is the fire department does an excellent job, darn near got all the points in training. 8.82 out of 9, that's like fantastic. You can see the deployment. It's, you know, you have a large area to protect, but through the training, your deployment, or I'm sorry, your staffing, and how your operational considerations are, obtained, and again, another outstanding score there. On the water supply, this is the next largest, it's 40%. It's not only important how much capacity is there, but what's important is how that system's going to perform so that there's flow testing or hydraulic modeling, that that's being, on a routine basis, the proper testing is being done there. And then on the community risk reduction side, it's important that there's a fire code, but how that fire code's being enforced, that there are inspections being done. You all do an excellent job with public fire safety education, and then that all fires are investigated for the origin and cause of the fires, and they utilize the text for system for incident reporting. So on that side, there was five and a half points, and you did ace that. That is fantastic. That's an excellent score. Really a fantastic score. So when you break it all down, this is a little hard to see, but I have a better slide than this. But you break it down, you had 9.4 for emergency communications, you had the 41.02 on the fire, 30.8, that's hard to see. And we put that in. There's a divergence factor, which is the difference between the fire and the water, and we deduct that, but then we add in the community risk reduction. This part might be a little easier to see. And then when we do that, let me go back here. You scored 92.78, so well above the 90 points, and you received your Class One classification. This website we have available for the fire chief actually breaks down not only your score for each category, but also it breaks down where you stand both statewide, nationally, and amongst a peer group of similar cities of similar size and similar-sized fire departments. And you can see in each of those cases on the right of all those bar graphs that you exceeded all those comparable benchmarks. So it's, again, our honor today, tonight, to present you. Vera Risk is our parent corporation, but the ISO Public Protection Classification of a Class One. And my bald head's a little red right now because our plaque did not come in on time. They skunked me on the delivery, but I will be sure to ship that out to the fire chief. Supposed to get it on Thursday. But with us this evening is the State Fire Marshal's Office, both State Fire Marshal Knight, Assistant Chief Fire Marshal Allen, and Joel Duke, our Public Protection Classification Officer that we work with. They do have a plaque. So they have one up on me tonight. But again, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. Tell you what, Austin made me think I was coming to a Arctic Tundra. So thank you, Ms. Chris. I called you about five times making sure this was still scheduled. So great to be here. Glad I made it A-OK. So good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. My name is Joel Duke. I'm a Deputy State Fire Marshal and the Public Protection Classification Oversight Officer with the Texas State Fire Marshal's Office, a division of the Texas Department of Insurance. I would like to congratulate Fire Chief Jax, the Denison Fire Department, the City Council, City Manager, public service employees, and all others involved in becoming a Class One. Congratulations. We understand the commitment it takes to achieve this goal, and we acknowledge and recognize your hard work and dedication. At the Texas State Fire Marshal's Office, our mission statement is to reduce the loss of life and property through prevention, education, and protection. We thank you in helping us achieve these goals by providing superior fire protection to the citizens of Denison. On behalf of the Texas State Fire Marshal, Chief Deborah Knight, who is sitting here tonight, and Assistant State Fire Marshal Chuck Allen, and the Commissioner of the Texas Department of Insurance, she's not in attendance, Cassie Brown, I congratulate you on this achievement and present you with your Class One plaque. Congratulations.
Denison Fire Rescue. Come on in here. Come on in here.
This was all because of them. This is the ultimate team effort for this city. It's not just the fire department. It's the water department, it's the emergency dispatching, police department, city council, mayor, city manager. You know, without your support, this would never happen. We've come a long way in two years. Go from a three to a one is unbelievable. And that's the kind of city this is. It's a city that, we don't settle for average. We don't settle for good. We don't give participation medals. We strive to be number one, and that's what we are.
So Chief, before you leave, I remember clearly at our budget retreat, when I asked you, you were talking about receiving an ISO One, and I said, "In how many years do you think it'll take us to get there?" And I'll never forget your response, "Oh, we'll do it this year." And you did. And so it was, as you said, it took everyone's effort, but the leadership had to be there to set the tone for wanting to have that desire. And it is such a great, it is such a reward to look across this department and see your pride in what you've been able to accomplish together. And we all know that that wasn't always the case. So thank you so much for all of your efforts for bringing us to this tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, that was certainly a great way to start the meeting, wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. At every meeting, we set aside time for public comments, where any citizen may speak to any action item on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card before we get to this point in our meeting. Ms. Wallantine, are there any requests to speak cards? Being none, there will be no public comments. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. And I think, no, I'm on the right one. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to rezone an 11.44 acre portion of the tract identified as GCAD property ID number 151234 from the multifamily one residential and commercial district partially within the Austin Avenue overlay to a planned development district PD partially within the Austin Avenue overlay with a base zoning of multifamily one, multifamily residential to allow for multifamily residential use. Case number 2023-119PD. Ms. York.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to rezone attractive land kind of on the southeast quadrant of South Eisenhower Parkway and South Fannin Avenue to a planned development overlay district to allow for multifamily uses. The subject tract is currently zoned multifamily one and commercial. However, the applicant has requested a few deviations from the base zoning district, which means we need a PD for that. The applicant wishes to, oh, I'm sorry, let me get my bearings. The applicant wishes to construct 13 12-plexes on 13 individually-platted lots. The minimum area or acre that is required for multifamily development is 10 acres. These 13 lots will not meet that 10-acre requirement, and therefore they have requested a PD. This is a concept plan of kind of the layout of those 12-plexes. Each unit will have access to a two-car garage, and visitor parking will be provided via dedicated spaces throughout the development. The development will also provide residents with open space, which is kind of depicted on this concept plan, as well as a pool, a playground, and dedicated sidewalks allowing for connectivity to all the units, allowing connectivity from the units to those open spaces. And all of these amenities will be maintained by a property owners' association. Oh, I'm sorry. Access to this development is provided off of South Eisenhower Parkway, and it's kind of hard to see, but in the southern, this will be the southern portion of the property, there is a second point of access that will go out to South Fannin Avenue through a single-family development that the applicant is currently working on. A traffic impact study will be required at the time of preliminary plat, given the proximity to a texted right-of-way. And while this request complies with a comprehensive plan and staff recommends approval of the request, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. However, there was a development standard that they requested be changed, and their recommendation at the time was in regards to side yard setbacks. At the commission, the applicant had requested that a side yard setback for structures be four feet, and any structures that were adjacent to a public right-of-way be five feet. Staff recommended at least expanding that side yard setback for public right-of-ways to 15 feet, and the commission felt that it was necessary to expand, but to make it 10 feet. So while the commission recommended approval, they also recommended a side yard setback for structures be five feet with 10-feet requirement for those properties that were adjacent, or structures that were adjacent to public right-of-way, just to help with visibility for any drivers or pedestrians. All of the structures will be, will have an exterior that will be constructed out of 75% masonry products, and all landscaping and perimeter screening, if necessary, will comply with the City of Denison zoning ordinance. And I'm present for any questions you may have, and so is the applicant.
Questions for Ms. York. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? If not, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the subject property being rezoned to a planned development overlay district to allow for multifamily residential use. Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crawley and a second by Councilmember Thomas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mayor, just a clarification, did the motion include the P&amp;Z's recommended setbacks?
Yes.
Okay. Do I need to take the vote again, or that's enough clarification? Okay. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to amend the planned development ordinance number 5166 to add an additional 1.644 acres to the existing PD, and to include the base zonings of single-family residential District Five, single-family residential District Attached SFTH, multifamily residential District FM One, multifamily residential District FM Two, and commercial District C on the approximately 28.36 acre tract commonly known as 3400 West Crawford Street, case number 2023-118PD. Ms. York.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicant is requesting or seeking to amend the existing PD overlay district that is accompanying or on this property to allow for a mixed-use development to include commercial spaces and several types of residential uses, as well as dedicated open space and amenities. The subject property will be divided into two tracts of land. Tract One, which is located on the east side of the property along Lilis Lane, will allow for the development of a mixture of residential uses to include single-family, townhomes, and duplex. The base zoning districts have been established for each use, providing development standards for both owner-occupied and units that are going to be retained for rental purposes. And those base zoning districts, as well as their deviations or development standards, are within your agenda as backup. A property owners' association will also be established to maintain mini-perimeter fencing, open spaces, or amenities for Tract One. We, I will say that we don't have like a concept plan that we typically have for these planned developments that show specific areas or acreage allotted for these residential uses. However, staff felt that the development standards that were discussed and agreed upon between the applicant and staff, that we felt like they were strong enough to move forward without that concept plan. However, at the time of preliminary plat, those residential uses will have to be established so that we can move forward with the appropriate construction plans. Tract Two, located on the west side of the property along US 75 and Crawford, will allow for the development of commercial uses and multifamily two uses. The uses that are allowed are located within our Use Regulation chart, Section 28.49. However, the PD does establish some prohibited uses. Those uses include self-storage, mini warehouse self-storage, auto dealer, new or used, auto repair, major or minor, car wash, pawn shop, trailer rental, RV sales, or and, single-family attached or detached development. or and, single-family attached or detached development. The goal is to, with the multifamily tract, is to construct an apartment complex. That structure, one of the development standards that is listed within the planned development document, is that the structure will have an exterior, excuse me, will have an exterior that will have a minimum of 80% masonry. All the commercial structures will have a minimum exterior will be constructed at 75% masonry. Landscaping requirements will meet the zoning code. However, the applicant has proposed a 20-foot landscape buffer for the properties that are adjacent to US 75. The ordinance requires a 30-foot landscape buffer, and staff felt like this was a good deviation from that standard. And there will also be a Property Owners Association for this tract to maintain any kind of open spaces or amenities or private infrastructure. The PD does, excuse me, I'm sorry. That's loud, want to clear my throat. The PD provides for a minimum of five acres of open space for both tracts, as well as a series of trails connecting the open space to the surrounding residential uses. Additional amenities include playground areas and a trailhead parking lot. And then the multifamily complex proposed in Tract two will include a pool and an amenities center for those residences. This, this request does comply with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as well. And I'm present for any questions. I know it's a lot of information.
Questions for Ms. York.
So the way the item is written, all we're considering today is the addition of the 1.64 acres to the existing PD. Was the rest of that information a change from a previously approved PD?
I'm sorry, say that one more time, Ms. Councilmember Massey.
Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an amendment to a PD to add an additional 1.644 acres. The way that reads is that all of the change being made is the addition of the acres. Are there, of the information you just provided, changes to the existing PD that was already approved?
That was the intention, was to include the 1.644 acres was not included in the previous PD.
Okay.
Julie?
Yeah, it's to add the acreage and then and, and then to include base zonings of the 28.36.
Understood, okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. York? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the subject property being rezoned to a planned development overlay district for commercial, single-family, single-family townhome, two-family, and multifamily residential uses.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley, and I think I heard first.
It's in my district.
A second from Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, end a public hearing, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for a conditional use permit within the commercial zoning district to allow for a distribution center for property located at 307 West Coffin, case number 2023-116CUP. Ms. York.
Thank you again, Mayor. It's the last one, I promise. Applicant is seeking approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a distribution center for Testa Labs for property located at 307 West Coffin Street. You all may know this building as the old Health Trends Center. It is currently zoned commercial. The operations of Testa Lab include production of over-the-counter medicines such as gripe water and herbal supplements. The applicant would like to utilize the existing structure for mixing ingredients, packaging, and storage of products, and distributing these products to retailers. No production of the actual products will take place on site. The proposed hours for Testa Labs will be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and will have distribution trucks bringing raw materials as well as distributing packaged materials on a weekly or bi-weekly basis. The future land use plan calls for this property to be developed in a mixed-commercial manner, which we feel this meets that requirement. The property is mostly surrounded by commercial or local retail-type zoning districts. However, towards the north, it is adjacent to, I believe that's single-family five and multifamily two zoning districts. However, I'm sorry, I keep flipping back and forth. The northern portion of this property is undeveloped, as are those residential areas. If those areas were to be developed, they would have to abide by the zoning code and screen whatever is developed there. In addition to the request, applicant is proposing improvements to the site, and that includes the parking lot, as well as providing additional landscaping along Coffin Street. And given the location or the proximity to South Eisenhower Parkway, staff does not anticipate any kind of traffic issues with any of the residential that is further to the west. Given all of this, staff recommends approval of the request, as did the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on January 9th. And I'm present for any questions, and so is the applicant.
Questions for Ms. York.
You may have said it, and I missed it. Is it a box truck? Is that just, is that a small delivery truck?
Yes.
It's not like a semi-truck, that's like a?
No, sir. That was my understanding. The applicant may be able to expand on that a little bit, but a box truck just bringing in the goods and?
Okay.
Is the applicant here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Will you come forward, please, sir, and speak and state your name and address for the record? And enlighten us on what is a box truck?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Yaya Leje, and I live in 15195 Snozil Drive, Frisco, Texas.
And what is a box truck?
Yeah, mostly it's going to be a box truck, like the small truck to get the ingredients.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
It's not a semi-truck, and that's all that really matters.
Okay, all right, okay. It's not a semi-truck, okay, all right.
Like a FedEx, okay, okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the conditional use permit to allow the use of distribution center for property located at 307 West Coffin Street.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Hender. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. York. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on accepting the resignation of Robert Crowley, Councilmember Place Four, Single Member District Four. Mr. Crowley.
Mayor, thank you. After much deliberation and many prayers and consultation with my wife, I've made the decision to resign my seat to run for the Dennison Mayor in the May election. It's a true honor to serve the voters of Place Four, and I enjoy my service with each and every one of you on the council. So the only reason I would consider running is to run for, resigning is to run for the office of mayor for this great community. I believe now is the time for continued strong leadership for all of Dennison, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley. I'll entertain a motion to accept Mayor Pro Tim Crowley's letter of resignation.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept Mayor Pro Tim Robert Crowley's resignation.
With regret.
With regret.
There is a motion by Councilmember Courtwright and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. Just for clarification, so that everybody is on the same page. Because of Mayor Pro Tim's term in office and the amount of time he has remaining on his term, he will be held over until he is replaced in a special election on May. The same thing holds true for Councilmember Hender, who announced, which gave an automatic resignation, but he falls into the same category with the same amount of years' time remaining on his term. So he will also be held over until he is replaced by special election on May 4th. So we want to be sure that everybody has clarity on where that is. And so, effective tomorrow, Place Four and Place Six, right? Will be open for citizens of Dennison to file for those positions. So just want to make sure that?
Not, that's not right. The application for the special election won't go into effect until February 6th. So the application period for the special election will be February 6th to March 4th.
Okay.
So we have to order the special election first on the February 5th.
Okay. So just so you know, I don't ever get anything wrong because she's going to make sure that I get it right.
Amen.
So thank you for that clarification. So, starting tomorrow, anyone can file for Place Seven, the mayor's position, Councilmember Thorne's position, and Councilmember Courtwright's position. But the special election will not be until?
The February 5th.
February 5th.
And then the application period opens February 6th through March.
Okay, there you have it. So, moving right along. Item 7A, receive a report and hold a discussion on the Austin Avenue corridor study. Mary Tate. I should have said Ms. Tate.
Ms. Tate. Whatever you call me, I'll be up here, so it's okay. Good evening. We have engaged with Chris Lamka and Associates, who, Chris did the Main Street out front, to look at a corridor study for Austin Avenue. We are looking at a block south of the intersection of 69 and Austin, and then a couple blocks north of that intersection. And what we're doing is really kind of carrying over the inventory that we did for the businesses that exist. And so this is kind of the next step in that process. We are looking at how we utilize the public space. So we term it in planner language, complete streets, and that's how all people can use the streets and the public right-of-ways in a safe manner. So we're looking at connectivity. We want to be able to see the kids cross the street safely. We want to make sure that the sidewalks are wide enough so that cars, that there's a barrier between the vehicles and things like that. So right now, we're just in the information gathering phase, looking at traffic counts and the speed of the cars going by. And we learned that the traffic counts aren't quite as high as we thought they were. So Chris is gathering all of that information right now. And our goal is to add some vibrancy, as well as tying it into the improvements that will be made by Texas dot a little further south on the Spur 503. They're looking at a road diet. So they're also looking at reducing that space and beautifying it a little bit. So we anticipate this planning study to be done in June, although we don't have an end timeframe right now. We will hold some public engagement meetings, as well as Texas dot meetings with their staff to make sure that we're all working together. This is just an informational meeting and hopefully, or update. Once we have that study, then we'll start looking for the dollars to make the implementation possible. Any questions?
Questions for Ms. Tate? Thank you so much for that work. That was an information-only item and does not require action by the council. Item 7B, receive a report and hold a discussion on pursuing a zoning ordinance rewrite. Ms. Tate?
Okay. This is two of three updates, so we'll just keep it going. We have the zoning ordinance rewrite that we are now working towards. If you recall, you graciously allocated funding for that during the last budget workshop, and we're pursuing that at this moment. The RFP is ready to go. However, I did learn of a grant through the Texas General Land Office that will pay for both the zoning ordinance and the comp plan. If we do the comp plan updates first, then the zoning ordinance rewrite is a deliverable of that project. So I would like to pursue that first before moving forward with putting the RFP out to see if we can save some money. That grant is up to $300,000 and does not require a match. So that's in our best interest, I think, and that came after this was posted on the agenda. So just so you know, we are working towards the comp plan updates as well as the zoning ordinance rewrite to make everything modernized and consistent.
Questions for Ms. Tate?
Pull steam ahead on the grant money, for sure.
All right. That also was an information-only item and does not require action by the council. Item 7C, you might as well stay in place. Item 7C, receive a report and hold a discussion regarding proposed sign ordinance amendments. Ms. Tate?
We are making some sign ordinance amendments. The sign ordinance falls under Chapter 19, and that is under the purview of the building official. We have found through the enforcement process, as well as the permitting process, that our sign ordinance is a little outdated and that there are some contradictions and things that just don't match up. So when someone comes in for a certain kind of sign and it's not within our ordinance or our permitting software, we're struggling a little bit. So we want to make sure that we are updating the definitions, adding some graphics into the sign ordinance. We will be doing some reducing of things such as the height of pole signs on 75. Currently, that is at 70 feet, and we would like to reduce it to 40 feet. We definitely know that we might get some pushback on some of these items, but we do feel it's in the best interest of our community to develop in a way that maintains some of our characteristics, as we've talked about before. So you'll see this ordinance coming back to you when we have the final draft ready to go. It does incorporate opinions from multiple departments, so we're in the second round of getting those thoughts before it comes back to council for approval. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Tate? Thank you very much. That was also an action item that does, an information-only item that does not require action by the council. Executive session pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time, is deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law or to discuss the following. Just a note, item A1, confer with city attorney regarding boards and commissions would be pulled off of the executive session tonight and heard at a later date. Confer with city attorney regarding City of Dennison versus Sherman Pro Auto Glass LLC, DBA Pro Auto Glass et al., 397 Judicial District, Grayson County, Texas, cause number CB 210166. The time is 6:47, and the council is now in executive session.